All right, it is 6:00 PM. I'm gonna go ahead and bring the meeting to order. 6:00 PM, Tuesday, July 15th, 2025. We are at Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granberry, Texas. And this is the Granberry City Council's regular meeting agenda. You may be watching this live at www.granberry.org/live. And you may, you will be able to go back and pull this up on YouTube for further review. At, I don't know, how many years do we have on there now? Twenty, is it ten or fifteen years? It goes back, if you want to see meetings. And one of the first meetings that is on there, I had hair, so it tells you how far back they go, quite a ways back. So we're gonna go ahead and come to order. And if Pastor Lowell Erkenbrock of Hope Community Church and chaplain for our, not only our Granberry Volunteer Fire Department, but our State of Texas Volunteers.
Please bow your heads. Lord, you said that you bring beauty from ashes. Lord, in this time of just devastation across our state, Lord, we, we call on that. Lord, we ask for peace and comfort right now for the families that have lost so much. Lord, the people who are mourning right now, we just speak peace over them, Lord. When you have said blessed are those who mourn, for they will find comfort, we ask for that today, Lord. Lord, I ask for strength and stamina for those who are searching, those who are working, Lord. Lord, bless them for this time they spent serving others. We ask that in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. If you'll join me with the pledge of allegiance now?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you.
Wait just a minute, Lowell. Hey Lowell, wait just a minute before you leave.
You're in trouble. I was here before you say it.
We're gonna move on to item number four, proclamation and presentation. Mr. Kaufman?
Before Tammy gets started, I want to recognize Lowell Erkenbrock. Many of you know him locally, but I want to recognize him for the efforts that he is leading to, with our fire department as our chaplain to, and is pastor of his church, to gather up supplies and, and take loads of supplies to the Kerrville area to provide aid to those folks. This doesn't surprise me, it fits his character perfectly. They took a load last week, and I understand they're gathering up another load of donations this week to do the same thing. I do want y'all to know that I reached out to the city manager when this was going down and offered to send our Swiftwater Rescue Team, and he did not need that at that time. But we've got a great fire department, great trained folks. Lowell was recently elected as the state chaplain for the Texas Firefighters Association, and so we wanted to recognize him for that and thank you for coming tonight. And he's a dear friend of mine, don't get to see him much. We partnered in an effort a few years back called Hope Now. And he was one of the four that signed on the dotted line to be financially responsible for that whole event. It was a citywide crusade. And fortunately, God blessed that, and we didn't have to pay anything out of our pocket too much. But it was a lot of hard work and a lot of good people worked together to make that happen. But without Lowell's leadership on that, we wouldn't have had that citywide crusade. So thank you for all you do in our community. I wanted to recognize you and thank you for coming and praying for us tonight.
Thank you for the city of Granberry for being so supportive, for everything you do. The amazing support over the years for the fire service here in Granberry as I go around the state. In fact, as far as volunteer partners, Granberry stands alone. It's, there's, there's truly no other volunteer service in the state that can stand with Granberry. It's phenomenal through the training and the support and our current ISO two rating says it all. And so, but that would be possible without people sitting up there. So thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lowell.
All right, now you were sneaking out, you can leave anytime you want. I just wanted to give you a little praise.
I just want you to know I was seven days early on the meeting. Last Tuesday, fourth of August.
All right. We do have some more recognition we want to give tonight, and I've asked Tammy Dooley to explain this highly coveted award that we're celebrating tonight with Kristen. So go ahead, Tammy.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman, city manager, mayor and council. I am really excited tonight to get to brag on one of our own, Ms. Kristen Gibson, that you all know as our assistant director and sales manager at Visit Granberry. I am so proud to share with you that Kristen has officially earned her CTE. This is a certified tourism executive designation after successfully completed, completing the Texas Travel Alliance's three-year travel and tourism college certification program. That's a tongue twister, but it's, it's important. The Travel and Tourism College, TTC, offers a unique opportunity for professionals across tourism, hospitality, and travel industries to dive deep into an industry-leading curriculum. Each year, participants gather for an intensive week of learning focused on marketing, leadership, management, and strategic communication. The program brings together experienced instructors from university faculty to respected industry professionals and provides a collaborative space to grow professionally and apply new strategies in real-world scenarios. Kristen received her, her certification during the CTE recognition dinner held on June 26th at the Texas A&amp;M Hotel and Conference Center in College Station, Texas, celebrating alongside her fellow program graduates and industry leaders. And I was fortunate enough to be able to be there and watch her achieve this accomplishment. And I jokingly told her I was her official photographer that night because there were a lot of photos happening. As part of her final project, she completed a capstone project titled Strengthening Lodging Partner Relationships Through Communication and Collaboration. This project focused on building stronger ties with Granberry's lodging partners, which are an essential sector of local tourism. Kristen met with other City of Granberry department heads to foster cross-department collaboration and create a suite of materials to better support and inform our lodging partners. This includes a dedicated webpage, an introductory letter, and a full set of informational resources to ensure new and existing lodging businesses understand the value and benefits of working with Visit Granberry. So we're real excited about this. These efforts are aimed at increasing awareness of Visit Granberry's resources and support and ultimately encouraging greater engagement and helping boost hotel occupancy tax through improved visitor experiences and stronger partners, stronger partnerships. Kristen's CTE designation reflects her dedication to community collaboration, our strategic growth, and continuing Visit Granberry's mission, which is to promote and market Granberry as the premier leisure and meeting destination and for the purpose of generating tourism economic impact. And I would like to add on, so that you're familiar with the Texas Travel Alliance, this is the go-to nonprofit organization for the Texas travel industry, and they serve as a unified advocate for our industry, an educational resource, and a partner to promote and enhance tourism across the state. So I just want to say thank you for letting me brag about Kristen. This is quite an accomplishment for our staff and our city, and we're very, very proud of her.
Kristen, you got anything you want to add to that?
I just want to say thank you to, to all of you and everyone who's supported all of the efforts it took to complete my capstone, all of the department heads that took time to explain how their departments work with our lodging partners and how we could strengthen those bonds and relationships so that moving forward, we can be the best tourism department we can be. So thank you all so much for the opportunity to complete this, this certification.
Thank you for taking the time and the effort to go through this training, and it's gonna benefit us all, as we know, and we really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your success.
Counsel? City manager? Anyone else have other statements that highlight some of our staff over these last few weeks? No? I, excuse me, nothing? I was in Kerrville Comfort Fredericksburg area over the weekend. You know, I, you cannot imagine the devastation that's there. You just can't. You have to go look, you have to go see it. Please don't go, because they don't need people, they don't need lucky loos down there. And the volunteers that are from Granberry that are there, the, the loads of goods and supplies that have already gone down, they are much appreciated. And the thing that I was really impressed with is that they are, they, they are organized. They are organized up and down that river to make good use of the supplies that are coming in. So if you have any, you know, friends, neighbors in that area, you know, hold out, you know, hold out your heart to them, because they absolutely need everybody's help at this point in time. And I know our staff, I know our staff, I will guarantee we have staff down there that we don't even know about today. So, anything else? All right. So we'll move to public comments. Ms. Burwell, Mr. Hafe, have you signed up? Ms. Walker, no one? Okay. All right, we'll move right past that to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or previously discussed. Items will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. We have about four items, the minutes from our, our budget workshop and from the last meeting, the option to renew our professional audit services with Patillo Brown &amp; Hill, to adopt an ordinance for changing the master fee schedule, update park fees for softball and baseball fields, and an ordinance to amend our parking ordinance to remove a passenger car-only parking zone on North Rocket Street and replace it with a loading and unloading thirty-minute time limit zone. Anyone want to pull anything off for additional conversation? Mr. Rodriguez?
Six point three.
Six point?
Six point three.
Three? Very good. Okay. Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve six, the consent agenda's items, six point one, six point two, and six point four? Mr. Wadley?
Second.
Who made it?
Mr. Corrigan.
Mr. Corrigan, Mr. Corrigan made the motion, and Mr. Wadley second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Okay, those three are approved. So let's go ahead and discuss six point three, which is to consider adopting ordinance number 2541, amending Article 1.5, Section 1.50, Point 561 of the City of Granberry Code of Ordinances, Master Fees Scheduled to Update Park Fees for Softball and Baseball Fields. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you very much. Aaron, if you can give some explanation on this, I think we talked about it earlier this week on that.
Sure. So the, what I'm adding, so what was originally, originally there was a hundred dollars, just like is mentioned there, and we had per field per season. So we were short-staffed at the beginning of this spring season, so I was fielding some phone calls and helping reserve some fields. And questions I got quite often were, people wanted to rent it on a Friday, and we don't rent them on Fridays. Typically, we're dragging and striping and prepping nine fields for games on Saturday morning, starting at eight o'clock. So we reserve those fields to ourselves for prep all day Friday. And then they would ask, well, what, how long can I rent it? How long is a hundred-dollar period for? So it's a two-and-a-half-hour block. And then, just to clarify, it's, it's a hundred dollars per, for the season per day. And then, just to clarify that the season, you know, there's a spring, summer, and a fall season. So just to leave no room for interpretation, to answer everybody's questions upfront, we added the details to that. The, the fee hasn't changed, just some clarification added.
So Aaron, just, just, in this case, it's Monday through Thursday, I understand that. But what if they go, they want to rent it during the day, like they have some special event or fair or something? How, how does that differentiate from this one?
You can, so if you, so this is just a coach's package. So this is geared towards coaches that have kids signed up. We have a local GAA, it's a nonprofit recreational athletic group. They cover baseball and softball, and also they're doing basketball at another location. This is geared towards coaches who want their teams to practice. We've also, in the past, had some of the other non-local teams use our fields for practice, select teams, so they can come in for the, for the season of their organized play, they can rent a facility for practice for, for the length of that spring, summer, or fall season. This keeps them from having to call us daily or weekly and trying to find a field to rent, and us having to, to look at a calendar and find out what's still available and find a slot for them. So they can secure a slot for that season at a two-and-a-half-hour block time for their team to meet and practice. And, and I might add that weekends are first one, first served. We do not rent any facilities for practice on weekends. We reserve those for come first, first serve, or for organized game play or tournament play.
And how many fields we have?
We have nine, different age groups.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Mayor, let me just, for formality, that was, that was our, our speaker was our Director of Internal Services, Aaron McLean, just for the record for the video. Thank you.
Very good.
Mayor, I just want to make a comment on this. I mean, we have nine fields. Granberry Athletic Association reserves these fields pretty consistently for the spring, summer, and fall. It, it doesn't give the other local coaches the opportunity to reserve these type of fields if they have other leagues that are in the area. And the only solution that I can think of is possibly adding additional playing fields to Granberry in order to help those other, in order to expand the, the selection and the options that we have. You know, if we had a sports complex, you know, we could make the sports complex designed to be playing games on where these practice fields that they play games on could just be for practice. That would be awesome, if we can expand this, the parks for, for these coaches.
Others? Comments? Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Others? No? I, I want to, and Mr. Rodriguez and I have not rehearsed this, but we, if you go and look at what makes up a great community, city, and what, you know, what are the citizens' values and others people looking in, they look at about five things. One is, is it safe? And thank you, Chief, you know, we live in a very safe community. The other is, it, you know, do the lights come on? Does the water flow? Is it clean? Is it drinkable? Is, you know, are those infrastructure-type items there? And certainly, we work very, very hard, staff works very hard to make that happen. The other is the fiscal responsibility. Are we fiscally responsible? Do we maintain our funding? And do we make sure that we are using the dollar, or the dollars that we use are those that you would anticipate your citizens would say, yeah, that's the way we want to go? And the other is, is schools. People look to the communities, they look to schools. Well, we're not a school, but the park department is the one that actively is, is interfacing with schools and children on an ongoing basis. And I, I don't know, the solution's certainly not gonna jump on that tonight, but I do agree that that's an area that we need to keep at the forefront and to make sure that we are providing that service to, to our children, plus just the health benefits of having people run outdoors and fresh, and have the fresh air and exercise. The other thing that, when you talk about fiscal responsibility, you start looking at is, well, what do we do? And it costs X. Is there revenue coming in? Of course, your electricity, your water, and all, you can't spend more than you bring in, so you have to bring in exactly what you spend. The airport is out here spending money, but also bringing in quite a bit of money. Safety, you know, that's an expense. That's one of the things that we, as a community, can spend on and make it just a heck of a lot better than if we were trying to do this individually. Same thing with roads and infrastructure. And Aaron, I, I'll just say, I get to the parks, and we spend a lot of money. And I think it's well, I think it is well-spent money. But that's not an area that gets, you know, we don't, if we spend nine million dollars, we don't get nine million dollars in a hundred-dollar fees, in a hundred-dollar fees here. So we don't cover that expense. We just have to recognize that that's one of the things that makes a great community. And these parks that we have here are outstanding. You go anywhere in the state of Texas, and you'll find that, very quickly, that these parks are outstanding. And they do serve our children. So as a, Mr. Rodriguez, we, we didn't rehearse this beforehand, but I certainly agree with you that this is an area that we need to keep at, keep high attention of. Any other comments?
So, so Mr. Mayor, so at what point would we begin to consider having an athletic complex? I mean, is that something that we put in the comprehensive plan someday, or?
It is located in the master parks plan. Aaron, would you like to address that a little bit as well? All it takes is money.
All it takes is money. Sure, there were lots of things that were highlighted that we need to concentrate on in the parks master plan. You know, a new, new pool is one of them, you know, talking about money and not recouping that, that money. Ballfield facilities, rec center, I'm just listing off things that said that we either are lacking or need more of. Trails, more, more park land planning for the future. Of course, our park dedication policy through our residential development will, will help in that, too. And possibly funds from, from that program. You know, if developers aren't able to provide, you know, adequate land out of a floodplain and enough land, it might be through, through their fee in lieu of that we're able to fund some things in the future. But yes, park, park ballfields were mentioned, and, you know, these, these fields are great for, for practice. We have some really good tournaments and games there, but they were not, drainage was not thought of when those were built. Those were built out in a pasture, one or two at a time, as the city could, could afford to, all by city personnel in the years. I don't think any of them were ever professionally constructed, and, and there's no, you know, there's no subsurface drainage or anything. It's just all sheet drainage in a flat pasture. So, it's challenging.
Aaron, when was the last time we introduced a new baseball field in that area of nine?
When was the last time we introduced a new baseball field in that area of nine that we have?
In the area, so we added field, what we call field number nine, fourteen, fifteen years ago. And then when we built the hike and bike trail, we had to move an existing field over four feet. That's the last two times there was any construction.
So fifteen to twenty years?
Yeah.
And our population has tripled?
Yeah.
Tells you we need to get planning, get that, dust off that master parks plan. We're gonna have a strategic plan next year, let's, let's bring that forward if we could. Does that sound like a plan?
That sounds like a plan.
Pickleball and auditorium.
Yeah.
Baseball complex.
I can reach out and look and see how much, you know, how much land we would need for ball, for ballfields. If you stop and think of it, if you have a, a four-field complex, parking is a major part of that, because there's a team playing or finishing up a game when the next team shows up to play, right? So if you have four fields, there's two teams per field, someone on the team, someone showing up to play, and then grandparents and parents. So you can't just think about needing parking for just the four fields, so.
Big expense, kind of like pickleball. The pickleball court's inexpensive, it's a parking lot.
Right, right.
That's, that's just the reality of it. Same thing with baseball fields. And so we need land, and so we'll work on that and get it ready for you guys when we have our strategic plan and have some input for you to look at that stuff.
Chris, I just want to say, if you build it, they will come.
I agree. And pickleball, too. You remember, they already hit us up two meetings ago, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thanks.
Well, you might as well stay there, you're fixed to be on the next.
I'm number next, aren't I?
So do I hear a motion to approve item number six point three? Adopting the ordinance?
Some of.
Second.
Mr. Corrigan and Mr. Rodriguez seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ordinance has been approved.
So just to be clear, it was not a rate increase, it was a wording adjustment.
That's correct.
I just want everybody to realize that. Normally, when we adjust the, the master fee schedule, it's a rate increase. So this time, we're just adjusting the wording to, to better articulate what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to the deliberation agenda. Seven point one, provide updates to city council on the lease purchase of city fleet for fiscal year 2024-25 through the Enterprise Fleet Management, Inc.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we introduced this program, the Enterprise Fleet, and we're making good progress. We thought it would be a good opportunity tonight to give you a brief update on the status of that project and how it's coming along. So I've asked Aaron McLean, our Director of Internal Services, to give us a good report on this information.
All right, thanks for the opportunity, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Now we get to talk about cars and trucks. I know the front two rows here just can't wait to hear about cars and trucks. So with the 2025 and 26 city budget presentation to council in the near future, we thought it was important to give the council an update on the process of ordering and receiving the forty-five new fleet units that were ordered through Enterprise Fleet Management, Inc. As you may recall, this inquiry wasn't started, was started well before the first presentation to council by Enterprise back in April of '24. After some additional questions and discussion between staff and Enterprise, council approved an agreement in November of '24 with Enterprise to provide fleet management services to the City of Granberry. And in that service, it's one ton and down of white fleet and then patrol units also. Finalizing details for vehicle orders began almost immediately. Knowing that the vehicle most likely would be used by the same department and possibly the same operator, performing the same job for the next five years until its replacement cycle came due, we were able to work with Enterprise to better size and equip the vehicles for its intended use. Getting away from using older, larger, less efficient, hand-me-down vehicles will also allow us to save, have savings in fuel cost. And if we're honest with each other, you know, when we want a vehicle, it's, it's based off of a lot of times aesthetics, what we find appealing, or it may be what our grandpa put us in when we were thirteen in the hayfield and drove it for the first time, right? So Enterprise takes that, that personal desire out of our vehicle selections, and they're able to shop for the best deals, check the warranties, who has the best rebates. And then they come to us, they present those vehicles to us. Now, if we do get in an incident where we have a particular brand or model that we have lots of issues with, let's say, for instance, we have a lot of engine issues on a certain model, we can, the next cycle, say no, we'd, we'd rather not go with that, that model, because of the history we've had, and we can certainly opt to go with history we've had, and we can certainly opt to go with another model. Some of the new hybrid vehicles, like the Ford Maverick, that we are now using, get an average of 38 miles per gallon compared to the 15 to 18 miles per gallon we were getting in the older vehicles. So, as you may recall, we had a lot of people in larger vehicles that didn't need a larger vehicle for the job they were performing. We had janitorial staff and some inspectors driving, you know, Tahoe pursuit vehicles around, not known to be the most efficient vehicles. We wanted to let you know how the process has worked to date. Once a vehicle is ordered, we're able to track its progression from the acknowledgement from the factory that the order has been received, when production begins, when it's been shipped, delivery to the upfitter or dealer, and finally, when the vehicle is ready for pickup. Before the vehicle is ready for pickup, our purchasing department receives either a temporary or permanent plate and registration sticker. We then take that plate with us to the dealer, inspect the vehicle, and bring the vehicle back to the city. While purchasing department is working with Tracy Sorles to get the vehicle added to our insurance policy, the fleet maintenance department is going over the vehicle, installing any safety lighting or equipment not already on the vehicle. Once insurance coverage is confirmed, the department the vehicle is assigned to is notified, they can now take the new vehicle to swap any tools or equipment over from the old vehicle so that it may be made readily, ready for Enterprise to pick up, for auction. Enterprise then sends forms for the city to complete, allowing them to process the old unit for pickup. There's always a learning curve in the beginning of any process, but overall, I would say it's gone well. There's only been one instance where a service bed that was spec wasn't exactly set up as specified. Enterprise was able to get it resolved within days by the upfitter. They came and picked up the vehicle from the dealer, took it back to the upfitter, corrected the problem, and then took it back to the dealer for us to pick up. Currently, the PD has one Tahoe at the upfitter with two to follow. We have four excursions at the upfitter, and we're picking up the last two of our white fleet tomorrow in Stephenville. Those are two half-ton Chevrolet pickups. The length it's taken from order to receiving the vehicles, the Mavericks were ordered in late December. We started receiving those in April, and the last one was picked up in June. The three-quarter-ton Dodge pickups, late December were ordered, got the first ones in March, and then the last one, last two in July. The half-ton pickups, the end of December, first of January, when those orders were placed, and getting the last two tomorrow. And then the one-tons were not ordered until January, and we got those in July last week. Some of the different models we were able to get to replace old units, we had 13 Ford Mavericks, that's a smaller truck, that's the one that gets averaged 38 miles a gallon. It is a hybrid. We were able to replace lots of larger vehicles with that hybrid vehicle. Ford Explorers for the PD and IT. And the PD did take some Ford Explorers in lieu of all PD pursuit vehicles. And of course, Tahos for patrol units, some Chevrolet halftons for the building maintenance department inspections and parks and rec. Dodge three-quarter tons where towing was needed in parks, wastewater and streets. And then Dodge one-tons were more towing, four-wheel-drive access, and hauling heavier equipment was needed. And then a Chrysler Voyager minivan for the conference center, and then a Hyundai Tucson for Visit Granbury's tram and for them to use for any schooling or anything that they have to go to. These vehicles all come with a five-year, 60,000-mile warranty, and if you recall, about every five years is when they're up for replacement. So it should reduce any cost of catastrophic engine or transmission failures. It should be under warranty. Like I say, we hope to see the fuel cost savings and then maintenance of vehicle savings if we're not keeping vehicles 10, 14, 16 years of age. Glad to answer any questions anybody has.
Let me ask this question. I think I know the answer, but I want to hear from you. The age of the vehicles that we replaced with the 45 new ones, they were 10 years or older, is that correct?
That is, that's correct. PD may have had some, not quite that old, but everybody else.
High mileage?
Yeah, yeah.
PD wears them out quicker than anyone.
Yeah.
And we're glad for that. That means they're working.
Yeah. PD goes through batteries and brakes.
Yep.
Did I hear you say that we also had some excursions?
Yes. Four excursions for some of the patrol.
Were they the Explorers, or Explorer excursion? I think the, is the excursion?
Explorer, excuse me, Explorer.
Explorer.
Yeah.
You got two Explorers at the?
Airport.
Airport.
Yeah.
And three or four at PD.
Right. And then IT will be in those as well, instead of pursuit vehicles.
Okay. That's impressive, 13 of the little Maverick pickup trucks, or the smaller, they're not little, and they are the hybrid.
I'll admit, and I'm sure, well, I don't see anyone here that would speak up, but not everybody is happy with the size of them, you know, it's, but we try to, try to size them to the need. You know, there was a couple of employees that we did end up moving some vehicles around to better accommodate some big guys, but.
They hit their head on the steel when they get into the little truck.
Yeah. And the most common question I got was, when you hop in those, if there's plenty of battery power, the engine doesn't come on, it's push-button start, and then it's a knob for the gears. So you could put it in and drive, and you can't tell if it's running or not until you, you know, press gas, so.
We got to learn.
Yes.
Learning curve.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Counsel, other, Mr. Rodriguez?
Aaron, I'd be interested in the difference in the fuel cost, the insurance cost, and the maintenance cost after we start implementing these. And if you could just keep the council aware, how we benefited from this fleet management program that we're starting, we've already approved.
Yeah, I'm interested in the fuel savings and the maintenance savings myself. That's something, we get a year into these vehicles, you know, this time next year, we will have had them all a year. I would love to come back and kind of give some more information on that.
Okay.
If we get some numbers to compare.
So, you said we received 45 vehicles. How many have we transitioned out?
Forty-five.
We replaced?
They haven't picked up all the vehicles, but I think they picked up four, if I'm not correct, and the rest of them, so with each vehicle that is to go away, they do, Enterprise does a check to make sure there's no recalls on it, and then purchasing department gets a bunch of paperwork in order, filled out for Enterprise, the titles in our hand to hand over to them. And we have just started that process of them coming and picking up vehicles to auction off. So I don't have any of those numbers at this time to share with you either, as to what we're getting for the vehicles.
So I think his question was for every vehicle we bought, we got rid of one.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we're not.
No fleet creep.
Yes, yes, correct. Yeah. Sorry, I misunderstood.
But we still have possession of most of those, or does Enterprise have those?
We have possession of most of them. They're in our warehouse lot, or just outside our warehouse lot, waiting, we're still finalizing paperwork, and then they'll schedule to come pick them up.
Well, something I was interested in, you know, when we said we would do this, it seemed like what they said we would get credit for was kind of ambitious. And I, you know, I really want to know how, that was where my original question was, was how we're doing with this whole program, you know, financially, is it, you know, it was presented us as a really good deal for the city, and I just.
So you're interested in maybe?
I don't have any idea how we're doing. It's been six months, and I thought that was a good time to ask.
We could come back to you with some, with some numbers we get for sale of those.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I can tell you that they did come in under budget on the purchase of the new vehicle, so not looking at upfitting cost or anything, they had budgeted $459,660 just for the actual cost of the vehicle total, and they spent, we spent $425,548. So the purchase of the vehicle, not counting any upfitting or anything, was under budget.
Have there been any, like, surprises with fees and stuff like that, or it's all gone the way you expected?
No surprises, really, on my part. I don't know if finance has any, you know, they, thank goodness, they deal with the finance part of it. The only thing I have learned is, I will go about next year, working with directors and department heads on upfitting details, you know. This, the way it went, the way it happened this year was, I would work with a department, hey, what do you need on this truck? What kind of, what kind of bed do you need on it? Dump bed, a lift gate, what kind of boxes do you want on the sides? And then Enterprise and I would work together. They would send me back a build sheet, very detailed build sheet, and then I would email that to department heads and get their way in and approval, and then we would order the vehicle. There's been some surprises and expectations a little bit, I would say. So, next year, I will be working with the department head to give me details, and then we will have Enterprise build it to their details instead of Enterprise presenting me a detail sheet on upfitting, if that makes sense. I don't, I don't work in the street department or wastewater department, so I don't know exactly what all they want and need on their trucks. So I will let them tell me this next year, and then I will reach out to Enterprise and have them build it to those specs instead of repressing.
Do cities pay sales tax on vehicles?
No.
So that, so you don't have to trade in like I would trade in to get credit for tax? We don't do that.
Okay.
Other comments, questions? Okay. This will say updates, it doesn't require any action, but I think we do say thank you. Very good. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
So bottom line, we're up and running, and we're waiting to see the sale of the 45 vehicles and see what they bring in. And I recall, they touted to us, they felt like that was a conservative number that they gave us, however, we felt like it was kind of high compared on what we thought they'd go for. But that was part of the reason we went with Enterprise, because they have such a better aftermarket sale program, and we'll see how it turns out on that part. But as far as vehicles go, and we don't have the shop replacing motors and engines and air conditioning units and all that expensive stuff and transmissions, so all the new ones are under warranty, and there'll be some more vehicles purchased next year, more vehicles roll out, and replace older vehicles, and ultimately have a fleet that is all within five years old over a period of years. So that'll be good and safe. That's the main thing. We want to keep our employees safe.
Okay. Okay, we'll move to 7.2, where we consider filling a vacancy on the Granbury Regional Airport Board by moving the current alternate member to a member-at-large and appointing a new member to the alternate seat. Airport member Ron Stowell has submitted his resignation, and Mr. Stowell's two-year term is set to expire January 2027. And so we're moving alternate Kevin Ross up to the board?
That's what's recommended.
That's a recommendation. Okay. So we have two, it's two actions. Do we have two actions here, wanting to move the current alternate member to a member-at-large? Does that require council approval, or can that just be done?
It does.
It does, okay. And then to appoint a new member to the alternate seat. So, do you want to consider those as two?
Two separate.
Two separate options, okay. All right. So do I hear a motion to fill the vacancy on the Granbury Regional Airport Board by moving the current alternate member to the status of member-at-large?
Some move.
Mr. Corrigan says.
Rodriguez.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I make the motion that we move Kevin Ross from alternate to a regular member-at-large for the term ending in January 2027.
I second that.
Mr. Wadley seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. So Mr. Stowell will be, or Mr. Kevin Ross will become our new alternate member.
Your regular member.
Regular member.
Good, okay. All right. Now we need an alternate, okay. And we have two applicants, Mr. Paul Cornell and Andre Alexander Cullis? Cullis? Am I pronouncing that close to right? Okay. Do I have any discussion on either or both of these applicants? Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, after looking at the applications, you know, Andre, I don't know either one of these individuals, but, and I'll just point out the difference. You know, Paul lives in Pecan Plantation, and he didn't mark whether Capital Improvement Advisory Committee was his number-one pick or Granbury Regional Airport Board was his number-one pick. But on Andre, he, I think, he's a he, noted that number one was Granbury Regional Airport Board. He is in the city. He's lived in the city for three years, and he's got 10 years of prior experience as an airline pilot and a navigator. So those were my observations for the two different candidates. I know, that's all I got.
Okay. Other comments about Mr. Cornell, or anyone? No? I, you know, I did, I also looked at these recommendations here, and I noted that Mr. Cornell, I guess he signed up early last year or late last year, but he does have, well, both the candidates are outstanding candidly, but also see that he has served with the other parts of the volunteer activity here in Granbury with the Opry Guild, and so that he served as Granbury's Civil Air Patrol here in Granbury.
Alliance Club.
I beg your pardon?
Alliance.
And Alliance Club, yeah. So like I said, both are excellent candidates. Do I hear a motion to bring?
Take nominations.
Yeah, I'll take a nomination to bring one of these individuals into the alternate role.
I'd like to nominate Paul Cornell.
Mr. Cornell has been nominated?
I'll nominate Andre.
Okay. And Mr., hey, you got two good candidates here. It's a good one. So, you only get one vote, though, right? One vote. So, all in favor of Mr. Cornell, and this would be by raising your hand, okay? Two, three. Oh, good.
There you go.
Okay, Mr. Cornell gets three on the first ballot here. All in favor of Mr. Cullis? Oh, three, shocking. Okay. Now what do we do?
Try again.
We try again? Try again. How many times we go through this before we flip the coin?
If it stays three to three this time, then we don't appoint anyone and we move on.
Okay, all right. All in favor of Mr. Paul Cornell becoming the alternate? Two, okay. No, there's three.
It's three-three.
Three-three. So we move on? We made no decision tonight?
We have no alternate.
All right. Unless somebody's not going to vote, which I doubt that. Let's go ahead and see hands in favor of Mr. Cullis. We have three. Thank you. All right, gentlemen.
Ask for more applications and bring it back.
We'll ask for, you know, we'll ask for applications, we'll bring it back, we'll try and get you an alternate on the board there. Cody? Okay. All right. Nothing else here? Okay. All right, we're going to now move to executive session, where we have a discussion of matters permitted by the following sections of the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, and they are 551071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation, 072, deliberation regarding real property, and 087, deliberation regarding economic development, negotiations. So we are now convened into executive session. I now declare Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. There is no action taken in closed session, and all council members are present. It's 8:15 on July the 15th. It's eight fifteen on July the fifteenth, Tuesday. Counsel, any, Mr. Wadley?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider item seven point two.
Second. Okay, I have a motion, and it's second, reconsidering item seven point two. Was there any discussion on this? Okay. So we have. What's this?
All in favor of reconsider.
Okay, all in favor of reconsidering? All right, okay. So this is to consider the filling of vacancy and moving the current alternate member. We've already moved the current alternate member, correct? So did I hear nominations for a member, to appoint a new member to the alternate seat? We have two candidates. Go ahead, Mr. Rodriguez?
I make a motion to nominate Andre Cullis as the alternate board member to the Granbury Regional Airport Board.
Okay. Do I hear any other nominations?
No.
Then I would say that Mr. Kusel would be. We'll call for a nomination, or we call for a vote with hands. Mr. Kusel is the only candidate. All in favor, say, or raise your hand, say aye. It's six and oh. So Mr. Kusel, Coolitz, right, will be our alternate member to the airport board. Very good, okay. Mr. Wadley?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a development agreement with the Roy Aldrich property for the plating of a portion of the property located at 1100 James Road without plating the full parent tract.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Overdeer. Any discussion? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion will pass six and oh. Mr. Wadley? No one else? Mr. Overdeer, Mr. Allam? No? Now, there being no further business, I announce this meeting adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.